Call the meeting of the County Board in session for February 25th and rise. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm glad I have my clicker. Is that up? Use Susan's.
No, no, no.
Check the drawer.
It's not in your drawer either.
Hi Mayor.
Dick, you checked your...
Yeah.
That's not going to work.
Boy, it's pretty cold. Didn't have any election yet.
Dick, you got yours?
I guess you got yours.
You can't use Susan's. That'll just mark her president.
Not in your drawer. Not in the back. I thought Richie had it.
That's great. I see mine.
That is your...
Oh, yeah. No problem. You got Susan's screen or not?
Seems like that's all we ever do.
Got your name on it.
Okay, we have 11... Twenty present, one absent, excused. I think she's in Italy if I remember correctly. Motion to present the agenda.
So moved.
Second by Chuck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That has passed. Correspondence in your packet is 2014 district meeting. If anybody would like to attend, they don't have to have reservations or anything. They can just attend. DOT local officials meeting in Bailey Harbor. Kenny, you're going there for sure?
I believe so at this point in time. Yes.
Okay. And Door County Housing Authority annual report's in your packet and a letter with the on assigned fund balances in your packet. And on your desk was a report of all the gifts and grants and donations to the county of Door. If anybody's got any questions? If not, we go to... Okay, and on your desk is a letter from the Sturgis Bay Fire Department. Has everybody got that?
Yeah.
The Senate Bill 566 agreeing with it. We'll talk about that when it comes up on the resolutions. If not, we'll go to public comment. Anybody... Well, go ahead Dale.
I got a communication also from Jacksonport Fire Chief, and he's writing asking for support of Resolution 2014-13 also.
Okay. We're going to allow some people to talk when we get down to that beyond public comment on the resolution, but somebody's got some questions. So, public comment. Anybody have any public comment? Anybody from the public?
Yeah.
Going once? Going twice? Guess not. Special reports. The Ad-Hoc Fair Committee. Rob, where is he? You want to come up to the podium up here? This committee, are you going to go through when we formed the committee now to remind everybody and all that? Okay, good.
I put a copy of this report on everybody's desk. It's the white colored thing. Hey there. And I'll run through that real quick, and then I'll see if you have any questions. And first, I'm sort of code doing this report with Dale, the chairman of the Ad-Hoc Committee. And if you go to page one, the first page, there's a list of the Ad-Hoc Fair Study Committee membership. And all the members, I got a correct couple of names I've misspelled there, but some of the ones that have changed. The resolution is on page two that formed this committee, and it was back in, I think it was back in October of 2012, when the County Board established this committee with the charge of seeking public input and develop recommendations to submit to the County Board regarding how to enhance and improve the Door County Fair experience for all patrons, participants, and stakeholders. And that's what we did. We took a lot of... Looked at a lot of aspects of the fair, and I'll run through the process that we used. Page three of the report, and I'm doing this the old-fashioned way, sort of like the fair, not using a PowerPoint, just running through the paper with you. First thing we did is go out and held public input sessions with different stakeholder groups, a lot of the 4-H clubs, the representatives of the food stands, the Lions, the Ambettes, and the Farm Bureau, the Board of the Door County Visitors Bureau, and another 4-H club. My calendar of events, what we did is on page four of this report, in November of 2012, we held our organizational meeting, and we identified those key stakeholder groups to meet with, and I started meeting with them and getting their input immediately in November of 2012. December, the committee met, and we reviewed some of the input from those sessions, which was quite a bit. On the Q drive and the public drive of the County Board's website or server is a full report which contains all of the input from the different groups. If you go on the Q drive, you'll find it there under the full county final report of the Ad-Hoc Fair Committee. It's a hard copy, but it's on the Q drive. It's about 80 pages. In January, we reviewed more public input, and we decided then at that point to focus on four or five specific areas of the fair. We're going to look at the exhibits, pricing situation, grounds and midway, and the marketing. Also, the food stands was going to be a focus area, and the grandstand. And in February 2013, we started talking about midway and exhibits and the 4-H and developing some recommendations. In March, we focused on the food stands and the grandstand. In April, we talked, just one meeting dedicated only to the pricing issue. In May, we reviewed and revised a list of key recommendations, and we sent it out as a survey for all the members to vote on and prioritize our recommendations. In June, we revised those, and in July of 2013, I gave an interim report to the Admin Committee. And we also decided in June to meet with the full Fair Board and take a look at the 2013 fair data, which we did in October of 2013. We looked at preliminary data from the fair, and the report on the food stands experience indicated that they felt it was an improvement over 2012. And the main thing that came out of the report on our grandstand in 2013 is that we hope to get the stock car races returning in 2014. And then in November was the last time we met, we reviewed the final attendance and financial data of the fair in 2013, and we decided to give you a final report and meet again with the Fair Board. We've been trying to meet with the Fair Board to run through these recommendations, but the weather has stopped us. But their next meeting is scheduled for March 24th, and we're going to try to meet with them then. If there's anything that comes out of that, we'll come back here and talk to you. I don't think it will. They're all pretty much aware of the recommendations. And starting on page six is our recommendations, ranked ordered by the committee members. A lot of these were already... Thad Ash, head of the Fair Board, was already on our committee all throughout this process, and a lot of these recommendations he was aware of as they were developed early on, and they've been incorporated into the fair in many cases. I won't run through each and every one of these, but I'll look at the top two. In the area of exhibits, we thought the display areas needed to be spruced up and improved, some judging changes, and improving the photos, the picture display area by displaying them on triboards, and I do believe they did that this year. On page seven, the second area was on pricing, grounds, and midway. You know, it was probably... It wasn't too long since they retired the use of the fair buttons, and they did a different pricing system. So probably the number one complaint or the number one wish that we encountered in terms of pricing was to establish a tiered pricing system so that attendees pay for entry, ride, and grandstand events separately, not one entry fee for everything. That was the number, probably the biggest, most frequently voiced concern that we encountered. We really thought it was important for them to market the fair as a more countywide event and try to incorporate a lot more of Door County into the fair. And then some changes to the grounds as far as some improved pathways around the midway and improving the electrical grid would be an improvement that would help. And also diversifying the food stand menu items, and the Lions in particular were pretty successful in doing that this year. It's 2013 fair. And the areas of... My next page, which is page eight. And that was more on the grounds and what have you. On page nine, regarding food stands, again, diversify their menus. Number two on that area is really important. In order to use, bring more of Door County into the fair, we want a lot of that would include different food products from around the county that we'd be bringing to the Merchants' Building, but we need to be able to work out a deal with the food stand people so that bringing in those food items doesn't compete with their receipts at their food stands. And that's the big difficulty that we need to overcome in order to bring more of Door County into the Merchants' Building. And some other recommendations. And then in the grandstand in general should just be used for motorized events and keep the music on the midway was a recommendation. Rodeo was a real popular idea, and the idea of constructing a larger second stage venue on the midway for bigger or more music acts was also a recommendation. And then you follow that with a list of all the other... A lot of other recommendations that were received by members of the public and at the public listening sessions and input sessions, and we listed them on page 11, too. And the item that we have left to do is still, as the committee, is we wanted to meet with the Fair Board and run through these with them directly. Dale, there's a couple of folks here around the committee, and I don't know if you have anything you want to fill in the blanks with or question about?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody that was on the committee. Of course, this is all donated time.
Yes, it was.
Even the officers of the Fair Board, they get minimum pay for what they do, and it's very tough putting a fair on.
Yeah.
They have to deal with schedules of the carnival. You know, it was brought up, do we keep the carnival? Do we not keep the carnival? What kind of fair will it be then? You know, trying to diversify, do different things. Hugh was on the committee. He brought up a good thing, that there's so many people in the county during that time. If we can advertise to the innkeepers, get a lot of those people in. Jack Money Penny was on board and doing with the... Not the Chamber.
Visitor Bureau.
Visitor Bureau. Get them more involved in it, in the fair. Get those people there. Maybe do a trolley. I mean, all these ideas. Something to bring more people in to make it a more successful fair. That was our goal. I'm not sure if we're going to disband the committee right now, meet less, or, you know...
I think we still have our meeting that we wanted to hold with the Fair Board, and then I guess we'll... Then we might continue. We talked about this at one of our earlier meetings, and is to continue as sort of an advisory group to the Fair Board or continue as an Ad-Hoc Committee or in some form continue the work of advising, I guess is how you put it.
Once again, I want to thank everybody for attending and coming up with these ideas. I mean, you did a good job of meeting with all the groups, getting input from everybody. And I mean, the Fair Board will be open to any ideas to help improve, I'm sure.
Hugh, you got anything to say on this?
Well, I just appreciate all the time everyone spent on it, and I hope that some of the information is actually used instead of just kind of like garnered and then not shoved in the back corner. I've said this a lot, and at the beginning, I felt there was a resistance to change on the Fair Board, and I think that that resistance has sort of faded away, and they're more open to suggestions outside of what they had within their own little committee there. And I've always wanted to see some sort of an athletic event combined with the fair. As an example, the marathon that Door County is hosting in July, I think it is, or June, has 1,800 slots in it, and people are paying $60 a person to come there. So one athletic event can raise more money than the fair raises in its entire program. So I would hope they'd look upon something like that.
Did you mean triathlon?
Nope. I'm just talking about the half marathon.
Half marathon. Okay. In May.
You want to say anything? You run the committee, too?
That's 120,000.
I think it's very well said.
Okay. Any questions? If not, I talked to Rob briefly before the meeting, and the Ad-Hoc Committee will still stay in existence until you meet after... Meet with the Fair Board.
Right.
And then they will decide, or somebody will decide whether to continue it or continue it in a different method.
Talk it over at that Fair Board.
I'd like to thank Dale and Rob and the committee and remind everybody that this was all donated time. So it's a good report. It's a start anyway. Hope to implement some of it, so...
Right. Keep at it.
Okay. Thanks, Rob.
Glad that meeting was canceled that night. It was awful weather.
Next, the Administrator's Monthly Report.
Yes. Before Rob leaves the room, my monthly report will talk a little bit about our mission statement, and Rob Burke did an outstanding job with that mission, vision, core values, and priorities that we all did back in... I shouldn't say "we," I wasn't here for that, but in 2009, 2010. It really is the core of what we do, and it really captured our priorities and what our values are. So thank you, Rob, for that. This has been probably one of my most fun monthly reports to put together for you. I know when I met with, you know, I've only been here about 17 months or so. I know to some of you it seems like an eternity. But in that short 17 months, you know, I met with many, all of you, each of you, to talk about what your priorities would be. Many of you mentioned communications. You mentioned the need for us to improve our communications with our employees and also with the public. So we went through that difficult year last year, changing our administrative manual, changing our pay plan, changing our health insurance, and this year, it's important for us to focus on the good work that our employees do. So with that in hand, I thought it would be a good idea for us to acknowledge the good work that our employees do. So we created something called Door County's Best Award. It is... I brought a sample with me. It is... It's a box of applause. This is... And I'll... Here you go. It's a box that first was awarded to the ADRC because they really do outstanding work. I'm looking at Supervisor Weigand. He works closely with that group. They best exemplify that mission, vision, priorities, and core values. So they were the first recipient of the... I just love this. DC Best Award. And part of the way that this was set up is that the recipient of the award chooses the next recipient. So the ADRC chose the buildings and grounds because they helped them, all of the Human Services Department, move from many of them from the first floor to the second floor. So they were the second recipient of this. For those of you wishing to keep track of it, there's... And also, by the way, almost forgot the most important part. What's cool about this is that the employees are improving upon it each month that they receive it. The ADRC created a certificate of acknowledgement that you'll see is posted next to our Nebraska Street elevator. So to keep an eye on who the next recipients are, go there because we'll be updating that. The second item, in order for us to engage our employees and talk about reasons for to get them in the door every day outside of the good pay that we have, the good benefits that we have, increase morale for the team and also unify the team. Because we have 350 employees, it's hard to get all of them moving in the same direction. Created a mission team. That's where that mission statement comes into play. Those folks that can best incorporate those core values that are in our mission statement. But the mission team's mission is to work on morale. They had their first meeting. They sat in the very seats that you're sitting in because these are... This is a powerful statement to sit in these chairs. A representative from almost every department got together, and they chose amongst them two co-chairs. And the co-chairs will be coming with me to department head meetings. They'll be coming with me to Admin Committee. Possibly even if they do something that needs your stamp of approval, you may see them here. But it's Dwayne Kuntz with our Information Systems area and Jake Erickson, a member of our ADRC team. Two outstanding people that are going to help us, help our employees improve morale and unify the team. So that's the internal piece. There's much more to come. I'll be updating you as we move forward on that. But it's also important that we educate our citizens, right, about what it is we do, so that external relations piece. I was lucky enough that the Peninsula Pulse asked for a column. In your packets is the first column, and again, it reiterates what our mission, vision, core values, and priorities are. And this column will focus on those sections or those departments within county government that best exemplify that. So that's coming each and every month. In addition to the print media, one of your colleagues asked that I occasionally call in to radio, John, and I'll be hopefully doing that as appropriate as the year progresses, as the schedule allows. Also, on our main webpage, CGI Communications, as you recall, I think at the time Supervisor Zipper was the chairman. The videos that were produced then are being updated with a new component about the wonderful quality of life that we have here. I'll bring this forward when it's ready to go. I'm guessing at your June meeting is when we'll have those videos ready to go. And then finally, I know at a Human Services Board meeting, Supervisor Engelbert and I were talking to another member of the committee, Helen Bacon, talking about the value that he had going through the learning and retirement session, and wouldn't it be nice if we could do something else for those of us that are not retired? So potentially, I'd like to explore creating a Citizens Academy where we can bring our citizens in to see all of the services that we provide here in Door County. So this has been the most fun, I think, report that I've had to bring you in a while, and hopefully I'm on the right track and have addressed some of the issues that those of you brought to me with improving our communications. So thank you. Just thank you. That's it.
Anybody got any questions? Kathy?
Dan, I was just going to make a comment. At the Legislative Exchange, the earlier part of February, one of the big sessions was to get your county out, the services that the county provides. And it was very interesting. They did a man in the street interview, and most people didn't know who their supervisors were. So I think that's something good to do, to everybody, not just the, like you said, not just the seniors.
Right.
Okay.
Excellent. Excellent point. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, a motion to approve the minutes of the January 28, 2014. Motion by Biz, seconded by Cleat. Are there any additions or subtractions or corrections? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed? That has passed. Next was the resolution, the appointment of the Director of Door County EMS. This appointment is Marine's, but it has to be approved by the County Board, so we'll let Marine address it.
Dan Williams is here today. It is an absolute pleasure to present his appointment. This is his third time with our EMS department, and when he and I were on the phone for the first time, third time's a charm, is what we're going to say about this. Dan Williams. Dan, if you would please stand. Dan comes to us with 40 years. His resume is one of the most impressive. This is the man who is the best qualified, I believe, in the state of Wisconsin to run our EMS program. So enough said.
Okay.
The vote is yours.
We got to have a motion to approve this? Motion by Chuck, seconded by Hugh. All in favor say aye. Opposed? You're on the hook. Unanimous, by the way.
By the way, he starts right now.
Next is the transfer of non-budgeted funds to Door County Anticipated Retirement Payoffs. David, you want to make a motion and explain it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion. We approve Resolution 2014-10, the transfer of non-budgeted funds to Door County Unanticipated Retirement Payoffs.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dale.
We had 13 unanticipated retirements in January that were not part of what was the approved budget for this year, and as a result, the Finance Committee is recommending that we transfer $223,616.27 from the payroll contingency fund back to all of the affected departments, and the backup information in your packet shows the departments and the dollar amount that will be funded back to those departments.
Anybody got any questions?
Is this part of our internal relations?
Or something. Go ahead.
External relations.
Oh, that's right. They're leaving. I forgot.
Hugh, you had a question?
No, it's fine. Thank you, Dan.
Any other questions? The bigger the money, the easier the vote. Go to the voter board and vote yes or no on this. Just take two-thirds, Grant?
Yes. 14.
14. That has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Next item is the supplement appropriations for the Shooter Words Dock dredging. Chuck Brand.
Okay. I guess this Resolution 2008-69 goes back to when we initially came here, we said that we're doing a dredging project at Shooter Words Dock down the Town of Union, a very active fishing spot and launching facility for the county. And as a result of doing some testing of the waters and the substance that we're taking out from the bottom as our dredging, our closest pit was eliminated because of some of the contaminants found in the soil that now moved it to, I guess, our containment area out here near the airport. Transportation cost over-doubled, and the cost of hauling it increased. So we're asking that we move this money, which we already have in our account, to make the project haul, and we cut down the size of our dredging.
Quick, can I make a motion to approve?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Biz. Is there any questions on this? Go ahead, Dale.
I would like to say that the areas that were found as a little pollution, I believe it's PCPs or... But it was very, very minute, but it just caused the alert to come on that we'd have to put it in a proper storage area. It's not a lot of pollution.
Correct. Biz?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment. This is one of the more popular spots for the fishermen, and of course, they pay to use the launching ramp, and this $152,000 coming out of the launch ramp fee is... I look at it as a user fee. The voters that use the ramp, the money that they're putting in there, it's going to make it better for them to dredge it so they can get out of the harbor easier and go fishing. So, you know, I think it's very good use of the money to let the fishermen that are using the ramp and they're paying, you know, most of the bill.
Are there any other questions or statements? If not, we'll go to the voter board. This again also requires two-thirds vote. That has passed on a vote of 20 yes and one absent. Next item is the general referral agreement, American tissue. I'd like to have a motion to put it on the floor, and then we're going to have Grant explain it. Someone make that motion?
I'll make a motion approved.
Motion by Dale, seconded by Cleat. Go ahead, Grant.
Very quickly, the statutes allow a medical examiner to enter into referral agreements with various companies with respect to tissue donation. The intent of the statute was to encourage such activity, and these agreements require approval of the Corporation Council, and then within 60 days of approval of the Corporation Council, approval by the County Board's adoption of a resolution. We've done these in the past, so...
Correct. Has anybody got any questions? If not, we'll go to the voter board again. This one's just a simple majority, I think.
Correct.
This has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Next item is the simulcast radio system...
I've said this a lot in, at the beginning, I felt there was a resistance to change on the Fair Board, and I think that that resistance has sort of faded away, and they're more open to suggestions outside of what they're, they had within their own little committee there. And I've, I've always wanted to see some sort of an athletic event combined with the Fair. As an example, the, the marathon that Door County is hosting in July, I think it is, or June, has 1,800 slots in it, and people are paying $60 a person to come there. So, one athletic event can raise more money than the Fair raises in its entire program. So, I would hope they'd look upon something like that.
Did you mean triathlon?
Nope, I'm just talking about the half marathon.
Half marathon, okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to say anything? You run the committee, too?
That's 120,000.
I think it's very well said.
Okay, any questions?
If not, I talked to Rob briefly before the meeting, and the Ad Act Committee will still stay in existence until you meet after, meet with the Fair Board.
Right.
And then they will decide, or somebody will decide whether to continue it or continue it in a different method.
Talk it over at that Fair.
I'd like to thank Dale, and Rob, and that, and the committee, and remind everybody that this was all donated time. So, and it's a good report, it's a start anyway. Hope they implement some of it, so keep at it.
Okay.
All right, Rob.
Glad that meeting was canceled that night. It was awful weather.
Next, the Administrator's Monthly Report.
Yes, before Rob leaves the room, my monthly report will talk a little bit about our mission statement, and Rob Burke did an outstanding job with that mission, vision, core values, and priorities that we all did back in, I shouldn't say "we," I wasn't here for that, but in 2009, 2009, 2010. It really is the core of what we do, and it really captured our priorities and what our values are. So, thank you, Rob, for that. This has been probably one of my most fun monthly reports to put together for you. I know when I met with, you know, I'm only, I've only been here about 17 months or so. I know to some of you it seems like an eternity. But, in that short 17 months, you know, I met with many, all of you, each of you, to talk about what your priorities would be. Many of you mentioned communications. You mentioned the need for us to improve our communications with our employees, and also with the public. So, we went through that difficult year last year, changing our administrative manual, changing our pay plan, changing our health insurance, and this year, it's important for us to focus on the good work that our employees do. So, with that in hand, thought it would be a good idea for us to acknowledge the good work that our employees do. So, we created something called Door County's Best Award. It is, I brought a sample with me. It is, it's a box of applause. This is, and I'll, here you go. It's a box that first was awarded to the ADRC, because they really do outstanding work. I'm looking at Supervisor Weigand, he works closely with that group. They best exemplify that mission, vision, priorities, and core values. So, they were the first recipient of the, I just love this, DC Best Award. And, part of the, the way that this was set up is that the recipient of the award chooses the next recipient. So, the ADRC chose the buildings and grounds, because they helped them, all of the Human Services Department move from, many of them from the first floor to the second floor. So, they were the second recipient of this. For those of you wishing to keep track of it, there's, and also, by the way, almost forgot the most important part, what's cool about this is that the employees are improving upon it each month that they receive it. The ADRC created a certificate of acknowledgement that you'll see is, is posted next to our Nebraska Street Elevator. So, to keep an eye on who the next recipients are, go there, because we'll be updating that. The second item, in order for us to engage our employees and talk about reasons for, to get them in the door every day, outside of the good pay that we have, the good benefits that we have, increase morale for the team, and also unify the team, because we have 350 employees, it's hard to get all of them moving in the same direction. Created a mission team. That's where that mission statement comes into play. Those folks that, that can best incorporate those core values that are in our mission statement. But, the mission team's mission is to work on morale. They had their first meeting, they sat in the very seats that you're sitting in, because these are, this is a powerful statement to sit in these chairs. A representative from almost every department got together, and they chose amongst them two co-chairs. And, the co-chairs will be coming with me to Department Head meetings, they'll be coming with me to Admin Committee, possibly even if they, if they do something that, that needs your stamp of approval, you may see them here. But, it's Dwayne Coons with our Information Systems Area, and Jake Erickson, a member of our ADRC team. Two outstanding people that have, are going to help us, help our employees improve morale and unify the team. So, that's the internal piece. There's much more to come. I'll be updating you as we move forward on that. But, it's also important that we educate our citizens, right, about what it is we do, so that external relations piece. I was lucky enough that the Peninsula Pulse asked for a column. In your packets is the first column, and again, it reiterates what our mission, vision, core values, and priorities are. And, this column will focus on those sections or those departments within county government that best exemplify that. So, that's coming each and every month. In addition to the print media, one of your colleagues asked that I occasionally call in to radio, John, and I'll be hopefully doing that as appropriate as the year progresses, as the schedule allows. Also, on our main webpage, CGI Communications, as you recall, I think at the time Supervisor Zipper was the chairman, the videos that were produced then are being updated with a new component about the wonderful quality of life that we hear, have here. I'll bring this forward when it's ready to go. I'm guessing at your June meeting is when we'll have those videos ready to go. And then finally, I know at a Human Services Board meeting, Supervisor Engelbert and I were talking to another member of the committee, Helen Bacon, talking about the value that he had going through the learning and retirement session, and wouldn't it be nice if we could do something else for those of us that are not retired? So, potentially, I'd like to explore creating a Citizens Academy, where we can bring our citizens in to see all of the services that we provide here in Door County. So, this has been the most fun, I think, report that I've had to bring you in a while, and hopefully, I'm on the right track and have addressed some of the issues that those of you brought to me with improving our communications. So, thank you, just thank you. That's it.
Anybody got any questions? Kathy?
Dan, I was just going to make a comment. At the Legislative Exchange, the earlier part of February, one of the big sessions was to get your county out, the services that the county provides, and it was very interesting, they did a man in the street interview, and most people didn't know who their supervisors were. So, I think that's something good to do, to everybody, not just the, like, you said, not just the seniors.
Right.
Okay.
Excellent, excellent point. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, a motion to approve the minutes of the January 28th, 2014. Motion by Biz, seconded by Cleat. Are there any additions, or subtractions, or corrections? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. Next was the resolution, the appointment of the Director of Darkone EMS. This appointment is Marines, but it has to be approved by the County Board, so we'll let Marine address it.
Dan Williams is here today. It is an absolute pleasure to present his appointment. This is his third time with our EMS department, and when he and I were on the phone for the first time, third time's a charm, is what we're going to say about this. Dan Williams, Dan, if you would please stand. Dan comes to us with 40 years, I, his resume is one of the most impressive. This is the man who is the best qualified, I believe, in the state of Wisconsin to run our EMS program. So, enough said.
Okay.
The vote is yours.
We gotta have a motion to approve this. Motion by Chuck, seconded by Hugh. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're on the hook. Unanimous, by the way.
By the way, he starts right now.
Next is the transfer of non-budgeted funds to Door County Unanticipated Retirement Payoffs. David, you want to make a motion and explain it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion. We approve Resolution 2014-10, the transfer of non-budgeted funds to Door County Unanticipated Retirement Payoffs.
Second.
Seconded by Dale.
We had 13 unanticipated retirements in January, that were not part of what was the approved budget for this year. And, as a result, the Finance Committee is recommending that we transfer $223,616.27 from the Payroll Contingency Fund back to all of the affected departments, and the backup information in your packet shows the departments in the dollar amount that will be funded back to those departments.
Anybody got any questions?
Is this part of our internal relations?
Or something. Go ahead.
External relations.
Oh, that's right, they're leaving, I forgot.
Correct. Hugh, you had a question?
No, it's fine, thank you, Dale.
Any other questions? The bigger the money, the easier the vote. Go to the Voter Board and vote yes or no on this. Just take two-thirds, Grant?
Yes, 14.
14. That has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Next item is the supplement appropriations for the Shuteworth Dock dredging. Chuck Brand.
Okay, I guess this Resolution 2008-69 goes back to, when we initially came here, we said that we're doing a dredging project at Shuteworth Dock down the Towne Union, very active fishing spot and launching facility for the county. And, as a result of doing some testing of the waters and the substance that we're taking out from the bottom as our dredging, our closest pit was eliminated because of some of the contaminants found in the soil, that now moved it to, I guess, our containment area out here near the airport. Transportation cost over doubled, and the cost of hauling it increased. So, we're asking that we move this money, which we already have in our account, to make the project whole, and we cut down the size of our dredging.
Quick, can I make a motion to approve?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Biz. Is there any questions on this? Go ahead, Dale.
I would like to say that the areas that was found as a little pollution, I believe it's PCPs, or, but it was very, very minute, but it just caused the alert to come on that we'd have to put it in a proper storage area. It wasn't, it's not a lot of pollution.
Correct. Biz?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment. This is one of the more popular spots for the fishermen, and of course, they pay to use the launching ramp, and this 152,000 coming out of the launch ramp fee is, I look at it as a user fee. The voters that, that use the ramp, the money that they're putting in there, it's going to, to make it better for them to dredge it, so they can get out of the harbor easier and go fishing. So, you know, I think it's very good use of the money to let the fishermen that are using the ramp, and they're, they're paying, you know, most of the bill.
Are there any other questions or statements? If not, we'll go to the Voter Board. This again also requires two-thirds vote. That has passed on a vote of 20 yes and one absent. Next item is the General Referral Agreement, American Tissue. I'd like to have a motion to put it on the floor, and then we're going to have Grant explain it. Someone want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Dale, seconded by Cleat. Go ahead, Grant.
Very quickly, the statutes allow a medical examiner to enter into referral agreements with various companies with respect to tissue donation. The intent of the statute was to encourage such activity, and these agreements require approval of the Corporation Council, and then within 60 days of approval of the Corporation Council, approval by the County Board's adoption of a resolution. We've done these in the past, so.
Correct. Has anybody got any questions? If not, we'll go to the Voter Board again. This one's just a simple majority, I think.
Correct.
This has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Next item is the Simulcast Radio System Resolution. David, you want to make a motion, and then we'll get this on the floor and discuss it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will. I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 2014-13, transfer of funds for the Simulcast Radio System.
Okay, seconded by Mark.
I'll start the explanation. We have a lot of technical expertise in the back, should we need that. If you would recall, last year, Sister Bay Liberty Grove Fire Department, through the efforts of Chris Heck, the Fire Chief, was able to secure a FEMA grant in the order of $1.125 million. And, it was to upgrade the simulcasting of our system and all of our towers here in Door County for the fire departments. Subsequent to that, when they went out for bids, as part of the bids that we received back, the bidders suggested or offered an alternative bid to add the other three channels of emergency services, police, EMS, that we could also simulcast at the same time. Since they were already here upgrading one of the channels, the CATS Committee and the IS Committee got together, reviewed all the information. We have a lot of equipment on these towers that are approaching the end of their life. They're 15 to 20 years old. If we came back a few years from now and upgraded those additional three channels, it would cost more than what would today, because we're already there on the towers replacing this equipment. They would just replace the other equipment at the same time and upgrade it. So, we're asking that we transfer $750,000 from the unassigned fund balance into this contract to have it all done at, at one time. There is a little time issue. The FEMA grant expires the end of May, so we're trying to let the contract be let and approved and signed and move forward with all this, so that they can get it completed in an appropriate timeframe, so we don't lose any money on the, on the FEMA grant. So, pretty much what we're doing is you have a $2.2 to $2.3 million project, of which $1.125 was paid for by the FEMA grant, and these funds would make up the difference for the additional dollars to, to complete the bid specs per the contract. Tim is in the back, Chris Heck is in the back, there's additional people to support the technical items of this. The Finance Committee did meet this morning prior to the County Board. On your packet resolution, there's two options for the funding. The Finance Committee this morning voted unanimously to use the $750,000 transfer selection from the unassigned fund balance, rather than doing something else with other CIP funds. So, that's, my motion is for the $750,000 from unassigned fund balance to be transferred for this project.
Okay. I think the interesting statistic this morning that I gathered is that, it seems like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but in Brown County is, what was that, thought there?
$22 million.
$22 million? Where was, was it Chris that told us that, or somebody? Or, yeah.
I think Dan did.
Wood?
Nielsen.
Nielsen, Rick, not Dan.
Yeah.
Wrong one.
$22 million Brown County cost versus what this has cost in Door County. So, it is a lot of money, but it's kind of small in one respect. Go ahead, Mark.
What Door County has benefited from is keeping up on this. Now, we haven't been extravagant, and we've repaired and replaced and upgraded as needed, and we've been pretty good with the dollars, and this is why we can pull a project off like this, or the kind of money we can pull it off for, because we've been good stewards of the system so far.
Okay. Are there any questions? Any more? Dale?
Well, as I said earlier, Jacksonport Fire Chief wanted me to relay that. Jacksonport Fire supported this. Last night, our officers meeting for Egg Harbor Fire Department supported this. Being a volunteer firefighter and EMR, it's very important that, because we're volunteer bases. Right now, if I'm in Sturgeon Bay, and there's a page in Egg Harbor, chances are I won't hear it. In this way, I'll be able to hear it anywhere in the county, and I'll be able to respond. This, this is going to help the community out in a huge way.
Correct. Is there any other questions? If not, we'll go to the Voter Board. This requires two-thirds vote also.
Well, who can vote no to them?
Hmm?
I said, who can vote no to?
That has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Huh?
Yeah.
Next item is the Support of Senate Bill 566 statewide 911 Emergency Telecommunication System. Kathy, would you like to make a motion and then expound upon?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second to that?
No second.
Seconded by Dale. You want to expound, or you want to call Tim up here, or what?
We're going to call Tim and Chris Heck.
Okay. Tim and Chris Heck, would you like to come up to the microphone and explain this? I hope. You did hear me, huh?
Yeah.
Or Tim, I guess.
I think Chris just stepped out. But, in essence, this was legislation that's being proposed in Madison to change the funding source for our 911 Public Safety Answering Points throughout the state of Wisconsin. PSAPs is what we refer to them in. In essence, in Door County situation, our PSAP is funded by the number of landlines that are in Door County. And, last year, we were notified by AT&amp;T that we had a huge shortfall in the funding for that 911 system, just in Door County. I think Mark can talk to the fiscal as to what we're paying now annually to support that 911 system. The reason that the legislation is asking for a change is we do not tax cell phones that same amount. And, as you are aware, most people now have moved to cell phones as their primary line, and so this legislation basically changes that and asks that all devices that can make a 911 call be taxed equally, so that we can help support the 911 legislative, or the 911 systems throughout the state. That's the basics of it. There's a lot of other stuff behind the scenes on that. Marine was down at Madison a couple weeks ago. She got kind of some kickback on what the League of Municipalities wanted to do about that. In Door County, we're fortunate in that one Public Safety Answering Point dispatches all of our agencies. If you can imagine a larger county like Milwaukee County, there might be multiple PSAPs. So, again, there's a little kickback from, from those counties who have more than one PSAP. But, I think it's important that Door County approach this and support it. CATS Committee discussed it at end. They agree. You have support in your packets from various fire chiefs. It is a better way to fund our next generation 911 system.
Okay.
In last year's budget, AT&amp;T charged us an additional roughly $116,000, because the, the fee that pays for this is not enough to pay for the service itself. So, this will create a different funding source that will be hopefully used exclusively for 911.
Correct. Dale?
One of the reasons to bring this resolution up today is that next week, there's going to be a Senate hearing on this, and we're planning to group to go down to Madison to be in, at that hearing, and we would like the support of this resolution to take with us down there.
Okay. Kathy?
Dan, there's also in this pending legislation to have, to make sure that the funds that are collected stay in a segregated fund to pay just for the 911s. Right now, they all of a sudden have been going over to the general fund, and just paying for shared revenue to municipalities and counties. So, that's also part of it.
Okay. Anything else? If not, we'll go to the Voter Board. Do you vote yes and no on this? I think there's a no on this today.
I think it's.
That has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Next item is the Ordinance Amendment to Chapter 11.05, Door County Code, All-Terrain Vehicles and Utility Terrain Vehicles Routes. Joel, you want to make a motion, or should I have John make it? You can explain it.
Um, well, John can make it, I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by, do you want to start it off, John, then?
Um, this is the town of Washington, which is Washington Island, wants to have all terrain vehicles on the county roads. And, this is the same item that came up before us when Union wanted them. And, at that time, Grant had wrote, wrote it up so that we could just add the county roads as they came available to be put on. They're anticipating more would come on, so we didn't have to reinvent the wheel. When I was at a convention in this January, I talked to Conno, Marinette, Forest, and Vilas County, and they all have similar ordinances under, on, on their books. And, all the committee members from the highway said they had absolutely no problem with this at all. And, this is what the island wants. The island voted for it, and let it go.
Okay. Joel, you want to make a comment, or?
No, it's exactly what John had said. The town of Washington, we passed an ordinance almost a year ago to allow ATVs and UTVs to be on the side of the road if and when there isn't a trail they can be on. And, town ordinance, our town ordinance is basically null and void without County W, because half of our town roads are connected through W, so we needed that thoroughfare to get through, so.
Okay. Is there any questions?
This is for dog slides, right?
Yeah. This year.
This year.
This year, yeah.
Any other questions? If not, go to your Voter Board and vote yes or no.
Oh, goodness.
That has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Oral Committee Reports. David, you want to say something quickly?
I'd like to thank Eric Elson. He came to our Townes Association meeting on February 6th, gave a presentation on all the county board, county parks that we have in the system, did a very good job.
Okay. Any other oral committee reports? Chuck?
Yeah, I guess I, I just wanted to make it known, this last Thursday, we were going to have a Airport and Parks Committee meeting up in the Town of Liberty Grove, and one of the issues that was going to be discussed up there was possibly thinning out some of the ash trees that we have in the Door Headlands, Bluffland. I guess, all indications from the DNR indicate that sooner or later, the Emerald Ash Board will, will be a threat to us in our county. It's as far north right now as in, into Brown County. And, once that happens, the ash wood basically becomes useless. And, we're trying to do a public hearing up there to advise people the best that, of the knowledge that we have, and why we would make the decisions that we would, as to possibly cutting not all, but some of the ash trees out of that timberland up there, so that we wouldn't end up with just a, a dead forest. So, that meeting is yet to be scheduled for sometime in the month of March.
And, this timberland is in our park system?
Yes, it's in the Door County parks.
Not private property or anything?
No.
Any other oral committee reports? Anybody have any questions on the committee minutes? Can't even take a break today. Review of the votes, your claims, and bills. Is there any questions? Joel, for the next meeting date, is nine o'clock okay?
One more month of 10 would be great.
One more, well, then we, okay. The next meeting date is March 25th. I'd like to have a motion to have it be at 10 o'clock in the morning instead of nine o'clock.
I'm old.
Seconded by, Hugh made the motion, who was Kathy seconded, I guess? Any question? No, we'll, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, we're going to meet at 10 o'clock, March 25th, 2014. And, I'd like to remind everybody, well, not remind them, but tell everybody they haven't told us before to, in May, Andy Phillips is coming, and he, how long is it going to be?
A couple of hours, two and a half hours.
He's going to, Andy Phillips is Wisconsin County Association Attorney, and he's going to come and, what's he going to talk on?
The roles and responsibilities of County Board and the staff, et cetera.
Okay, and that's going to be two and a half hours, so plan on sticking around probably through dinner. We'll figure that out later, but.
You're cooking.
Yeah, Gene can make chili for her.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Dale, who's taking it?
Pick a pick.
Right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.